Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Dania Beach Regular City Commission Meeting on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Go Panthers! All right. Hope you guys are making it here through your championship hangover. Can we please have a call to order? I mean, sorry, not a call to order, please have a roll call, clerk.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you, clerk. Everybody, please bow their head for a moment of silence. Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jumping right into business here, item 3.1 is Festival Viva Argentina. This is a special event application, and this is a Parks and Recreation item. So that's 3.1, do we have approval for that? Okay, we have consensus, we have approval for item 3.1. 3.2 is request for approval proclamation, this is Parks and Recreation Month, July 2024, next month is Parks and Recreation Month, sponsored by Commissioner James. Do we have consensus? We have consensus. Item 3.3 is an update on the noise code ordinance given by our Deputy City Manager, Candido Sosa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents. My name is Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. As you remember, at the December 12th Commission Meeting, we revised our noise ordinance with the intent to make it clear, easy to understand, easy to implement, and easy to enforce. We believe that we've been successful on all three of those points. And the number of complaints that we've received by educating our residents, our businesses, have indicated that the number of complaints during the daytime have increased by 40% and at nighttime by 20%. So more people are aware of our ordinance, they're calling the police during after hours, they're calling code during regular business hours. In the last 180 days, we've received 352 noise complaints. We have a breakdown, that has a breakdown by month, by address, we've, the manager has emailed each one of you this backup information. We are working with BSO, so in the next six months, we're able to, to break down even further what type of noise complaints, such as construction noise, such as music, and additionally, which ones were valid and which complaints were invalid, because right now, the system does not have that detailed breakdown. So again, the manager emailed each and one of you the reports from BSO that shows every single noise complaint by address, by time, by date, as well as the code compliance, daytime complaints by address, by date, and by location. That concludes my, the update on the noise ordinance, we'll do another one in six months. If there's any questions, please feel free to ask, I'm here to answer all your questions.
Any questions? All right, oh, Commissioner James?
Yes, I know that I said I would go out and do my own due diligence and have conversations with residents, I'm still doing that, I've had some meetings. I did have a chance to go out while you have the markers, and so I would like to set something up with city staff and try and do, so you could, you all can understand where I'm coming from and what makes sense to me, and maybe when we come back for our final recommendation, we can probably, we can have a conversation here in the dais where we can all workshop those small details, but thank you so much for hearing it and trying to, this is, this is very difficult for all of us, this is quality of life, this is being able to enjoy yourself with sound and without sound, and so there is a delicate mix and balance that has to happen, and so I just want to make sure that we consider every option from the each of us up here to get to a point to where we don't have, you know, the continuous issues that we do see, thank you.
Absolutely, Commissioner James, we'll schedule a meeting with you and the team, and like I said, in six months, we'll be able to provide you a further update with more details as far as the breakdown of what type of noise complaints are coming in.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Vice Mayor.
Which meeting are you in? I just wanted to find, are we putting something about the noise ordinance in the newest edition of the Pioneer? I'm just, because I've had a few people that didn't know that we had one.
I'll find out from our marketing team, and if there's still time, if we don't have it.
If we have time to do it, that would be good, just because I have, I have had a few conversations lately, in particular, of people that did not realize that there was one or that it had changed.
And, and we are having the core meetings, we had our first one at Meadowbrook, we did answer questions regarding noise, the noise ordinance, noise complaints, so the residents are being educated every different ways, the Pioneer definitely is a great way, through social media, through in-person meetings, so we are definitely going, going out there to the community and spreading the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Manager, appreciate it. Okay, we don't have any proclamations this evening, so we're going to go to our administrative reports with the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents of our city and our esteemed city team. Have a little video that we want to show you, as you know, we had a storm event on June 12th, and we keep perfecting the way we deal with these emergencies, it was a totally seamless operation, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner Davis, Commissioner James, Commissioner Salvino, for contacting us, I know residents were calling you, they were calling me, there wasn't an email or a phone call that was an address, we went to every street, every single avenue, every area in our city, we even went above and beyond assisting the Dania Sheridan, the Sheridan East condominiums, but as you know, you, we bring you a budget, and then you approve it, and I just want our residents to see the return on the investment on, of a couple of these 35 rescues that we made with our high water vehicles, Ralph, please.
Josh, anybody in there? Is anybody in there?
Open and see where we are with the water, Josh. Yeah, just pop real quick.
We have fire rescue behind us. Where did the step, Bubba, where did the step?
Is that still good with us?
I mean, this is what we do here in the city, in my next report, but anyway, kudos to all of you, kudos to all our city team, which brings me to a very exciting announcement. We received a long-awaited agreement from the Florida Department of Emergency Management for the Southeast Drainage Project. As you know, we're always ready to go, oftentimes, we have to deal with multiple agencies that sometimes unfortunately slows down. So today, we have invested approximately $10 million in storm drainage, and now being able to move forward, we have an item on this agenda for the $30 million groundbreaking of the Southeast Drainage Project Phase 1 and Phase 2. So it's a really exciting time in our city, so before the end of summer, we will be putting a shovel in the ground here in our city to commence the long-awaited Southeast Drainage Project, so we're very excited about that as well. We've also been very, very aggressive in regards to not leaving any stone unturned, unturned in regards to grants and appropriations. We were one of probably a handful of cities in the entire state that went four, 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 all four projects that we put in to be funded by the state, all four projects were funded to the tune of $1,225,000, so thank you all for your support, coming with me to Tallahassee. And again, more investment in storm drainage, more investment in Parks and Recreation, and it's just a very, very exciting time for our city as we progress and move our city forward together. Thank you to BSO, Fire, and Police, there's Denzer back there, I mean, if there's an unsung person, an unsung hero, Denzer, get over here, come here. I just, I just have to, because it's like Saturday, Sunday, whenever, this, this man right here, and by the way, he's a resident of our city. Just, just address us real briefly in regard to our proactive efforts before, during, and afterwards, and why we keep being that city in all of Dayton Broward that resolve these issues and do it so expeditionally while other cities are still dealing with these challenges.
Thank you so much, Manager, actually, I don't see it as a job, because I do have to admit that I worked different cities and the county as well in the past, but we never had a group of people, the directors, to deputy directors, to our city manager, everybody loves to come here, it's a very different feeling than other government agencies, so when you have a group of people supporting you, like city managers calling me, what we're going to do with this drainage, can we do this, can we do that, and our deputy city manager, who is in the conference, calling me, what can we do? And they put their personal life away, and then they try to address the flooding issues, and then Linda, for our HR risk manager, the director, calls us, what can we do, and then, you know, insurances and everything, and on the other hand, that, you know, other directors calling me, what, if they can help, Eleanor says, our inspector can help, so when you have that type of emotional support and everybody wants to help, and you do whatever you can do to help them, and then we have a group of people for our stormwater team, to water sewer, to even landscaping, so they waited, pumped the water out, the guy is a landscaping guy, he says, I voluntarily stay all night long, so when you have a group of people like this, the guy has no idea about the generators, he's sitting in front of the generator, learning what he can do all night long, and then in the meanwhile, we try to get help from contractor, we call the contractor company, and then within five minutes, we are available, so whatever you need, how many pumps you need, how many trucks you need, so when you have that type of group of people, my job is easy, just coordinate, so I love our residents and I love our team, so that's all I can say. Thank you, Denzer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Denzer, thank you to the entire department.
And you know, like I was discussing with, with the Mayor and Commissioner Davis, these relationships are so invaluable, when we were up in Tallahassee, not only were we meeting with our Senator Pizzo and State Representative Cassell, but we were meeting with Speaker of the House, Daniel Perez, and Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez, so we worked both sides of the aisle, we worked the people from Broward, the people from, from Dade County, we work all the people that allow us to bring money back to you, our residents in our city. Southwest 34 Terrace Drainage, $500,000, Lift Station 11, $275,000, Drainage Alpha Valve retrofit, $250,000, Firdapp Chester Bird Park Improvements, $200,000. We also position ourselves because our city team makes these projects shovel-ready, we have a match, we already are in permitting mode, so when we go to Tallahassee, we go early, we go often, but we go ready, and this has been the difference in the millions and millions of dollars that we've been able to seize for the past five years in our city. The million-dollar Southwest 52nd Terrace Project that resulted from one of last year's state-funded projects with a $500,000 match from the city will commence construction at the end of July. This project area covers the length of 52nd from South, State Road 7, east to 40th Avenue. The above-mentioned 34 Terrace Project is also a million-dollar project, the next step will be executing a grant agreement with the state of Florida, which will bring back to the commission, and we'll be able to move forward this fall for the process in regards to this project. Our $1 million fully funded via grant, our Storm Drainage Master Plan will be the city's first-ever storm drainage master plan, $1 million, all funded from our efforts in Tallahassee, in our relationships with the federal government. We have available 2,000 prepackaged sandbags, and as I write this memo, now I can tell you the update, just a great job by Candido and the team, we gave away more than 2,000 sandbags, not only for the people that were able to make it, but you all called us with other folks that weren't able to make it, and we were able to deliver 250 the next morning to our residents. These are things that we do in preparation for storm, storm preparation and proactive operations that we do for our residents. Our first core conversation, which is a program that we started working closely with all the department directors and our communications and marketing team, well, we have people coming to the city, it's also very important that we take the city out to the people, to their neighborhoods, to their communities, to the park, we had a wonderful meeting, there was about 30, 35, 40 residents, and we're going to, we're going to continue throughout October with these one, once a month meetings and core conversations with our community. As a matter of fact, now you gave me an idea, Vice Mayor, to bring the information of our new codes as well as the noise ordinance as well. On Thursday, June 20th, our Nightbrook Swanson Project was going to be heard by the Broward County Historical Preservation Board, because guess what? We're ready to go, but again, another example, they canceled the meeting in May with us, they canceled the meeting in June, as you know, because I know you guys are calling me, because you all have that sense of urgency as well, they canceled the meeting in June, and I know Denzer's working with them to see if we can have a special meeting, because we're ready to go, we have the contractor, but unfortunately, like I said before, we have to deal with other outside agencies, but we're ready to go as soon as they have that meeting, and we'll keep you all informed as well as our residents. DOC Building, our first-ever Emergency Operations Center, is in design mode. DOC Building, our first-ever emergency operations center, is in design mode, again, as a result of another grant that we received here in our city. Our first-ever emergency operations center here for our city. So we will be looking most likely at some time August, September, to bring you forward a contract for your approval and for us to be able to move forward. We are working closely with Three Suns Brewery, a local brewery here in Dana Beach. They are actually going to be blending a special beer in honor of our one hundred and twentieth anniversary that will be unveiled at our Oktoberfest. Cassie will be providing the details, as they want our city commission, city manager, Candido, our Parks and Recreation Team, to help blend this brew. There may be some tastings. Um, so we're very excited about this. They're seeking our approval to use our city logo in this new beer that's going to be unveiled Oktoberfest. And I wanted to make sure that I get your support for this.
We have approval? They want to use our logo for their beer.
No, they're actually gonna put it in, in, in the beer bottle. So the whole year, they're gonna be, you know, because our birthday starts and ends, so it's gonna be really exciting. And we'll give you the, the details of the process with them, but again, a local business that wants to work very closely with us. We are fine-tuning what we expect to, to be our fourth consecutive award-winning budget. And at the time that I was writing this, it was still out, but now it's official. We have won the budget award for four consecutive years. Thank you to Frank, thank you to Jamie, to Adam, all the department directors. Last and not least, just wanted to know that the length of this manager's report represents the magnitude of what our city team is accomplishing citywide for our community. Grateful to our entire team and to our city commission for your support. This concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Manager. Wonderful, wonderful report. Okay, up next, we have our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone in the audience. I just wanted to give you an update that there have been some new laws that would have been signed by the governor and effective for July first. Two of particular importance is, um, from Senate Bill Fifty. It's in Chapter Seven Twenty, and basically, it's an update to the requirements for condo boards and the rules relating to condos. Now, we don't necessarily have a role to play in that, but our constituency do. So it's important for them to be aware of it and to look up the new rules. Additionally, there, I was brought to my attention by the Vice Mayor, actually, um, the new law relating to balloons. The governor signed a new law yesterday, um, that basically, no one can release spoons, balloons. There are no more releases allowed in the state. The only exception is for, you know, like a weather balloon for scientific purposes, um, and there's a special permit for that, and children under the age of six, because obviously, a child cannot be held responsible for letting go of a balloon. I don't know why they pick six, but that's the rule. And it's a hundred and fifty dollar civil fine if you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. City Clerk, reminders?
Yes, we have a CRA board meeting coming up on July ninth at five PM, followed by the city commission meeting at seven PM. And then the next meeting after that would be August twenty-seventh, CRA board meeting at five, and Ci, uh, city commission meeting followed at seven.
All right. Thank you very much, Clerk. Uh, we have, we have Erin filling in for Alora. Erin, yeah. She's been up here before, but just wanted to give her some recognition. Okay, up next, we have our public safety reports, and we'll start with our police captain, Jason Tarralla.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager. So, uh, to start, um, piggyback off of that beautiful video presentation with those high-water vehicles, um, I can't stress to this commission what the impact made to our community. Um, Manager, you, you never take credit for anything, and it's true, you don't. But you had a conversation with me last year, and your proactive, and your vision. When you came to me and said we needed vehicles, we needed stuff to get to our residents. And when I brought that to you, without hesitation, you said this is phenomenal, fantastic, and you brought it to this commission. And every single one of you unanimously voted, let's do it, let's get it done, let's get him here for this hurricane season. Because of that quick action, and because of you getting that done like this, and because of you guys voting that so quickly, we were able to get those vehicles purchased, made, made out, because obviously, you know, a lot goes into those trucks, and have those delivered here to us. What you saw on that video was a snippet of what we did in that ten to twelve hours on Wednesday, I believe it was, the following Thursday, and then continuing to Friday. We rescued alone, and this is, this is a estimate on the lower side, thirty-five to forty residents in Dana Beach. We were pulling people out of cars, people stranded in waterways. Um, waters came quick, and people were trying to get home, they couldn't make it. We were rescuing people stuck in water, we were rescuing people from homes, multiple, multiple people from cars. I can tell you right now, I was here, obviously, last year, when we had the flood. We could not get to our residents. Um, it wasn't anybody's fault, we didn't have the equipment. Because of your proactiveness, Manager, in getting these vehicles to us, this time around, we were able to handle and respond to every single call that came into this city, we responded to. There was not a single resident that called for help that we weren't able to get to with our trucks. Um, and that's phenomenal to all of you. Thank you for approving that, thank you to the city manager. It was really, really, really amazing to see. It was emotional, too, because many residents were crying when we, when we got them out of their cars and, and got them. Um, you saw the one video with the, the lady crying and her grandma crying. That was only two people. Multiple, multiple people were hysterical crying when we got to them in the trucks. And because of the trucks, we were able to save them, get them out of the waters that were coming in their vehicles. And if you could see their relief when we showed up with the trucks, it really was. Thank, thank you for all of you for putting public safety number one. And that was prime example of what you guys have done in the city, so thank you. Yes, please. Um, to start, we, we, we had a really busy couple weeks, as you know, starting with the flood and continuing on even through today. Uh, yesterday, we had a shooting that occurred at Twenty-One Eighty Southwest Fifty-First Place. Uh, deputies located a male who was shot, uh, in his growing area. Um, upon him going to the, the hospital, he was able to give us a suspect description. Through our investigative means, we were actually able to immediately identify a suspect. Our Viper team was able to locate that suspect later on in that night in Pemmer Pines, and we safely placed him in custody, uh, for the shooting. We then went back to the residents and, and conducted a search warrant of the residents, and we located the Glock seventeen that was used involved in the shooting, as well as a special casing and evidence of the crime. He was, uh, placed into custody for attempted murder, and he is currently in jail. Earlier this week, our BSO BAT team, which is the burglary apprehension team, where there's been a string of burglaries going on throughout the Tri-County. And our burglary apprehension team, through their investigative means, they identified a vehicle that was responsible for these burglaries. They actually followed the vehicle in Dana Beach. This vehicle, uh, pulled up to our Dunkin' Donuts that was closed at, uh, Five Fifty South, I'm sorry, Five Fifty South Federal Highway, and they actually observed the suspects breaking into the Dunkin' Donuts. They observed the suspects walking out with the cash register. At that point, our BAT team safely took down the suspects, placed them in custody, retrieved the cash register, got everything back. Search instituted arrest, and through their investigation, this group was responsible for at least nine burglaries throughout the Tri-County, uh, involving the cities of Deerfield Beach, City of Margate, Boca Raton, Delray Beach, Coconut Creek, obviously, the Broward Sheriff's Office, multiple jurisdictions, and finishing with us and our city where their crime ring came to an end, where they were placed in custody in our city. Fantastic work by the BAT team. And, uh, just today, uh, earlier today, we are working a incident at the Motel Six, uh, which could have been really violent. Um, we got a call of property that was left inside of one of the motel rooms. And upon arrival, our deputies observed a subject inside of the room. Upon arrival, that subject automatically fled the area. We began a foot pursuit of him. Other deputies went to the room, and inside the room, they located a handgun. As the subject was fleeing, they also believed he was carrying a handgun as he was fleeing. After a two-hour search, our SWAT team and our K-9 unit was actually able to locate that individual who broke into another room inside the motel. We were able to safely place that subject in the custody without incident. We got a search warrant for the original location, what that individual was staying at. Inside that room, we located two firearms, trafficking amounts of cocaine, additional property used for distributing of narcotics. This individual had multiple, multiple felonies and was wanted, is a wanted violent felon. He was charged with possession of firearm by a convicted felon, burglary business, possession with intent to sell cocaine, possession to sell oxycodone, possession with intent to sell cannabis, and possession of personal identifications. He was running a drug distribution, um, center out of his motel room at Motel Six, which no longer, because he's in custody, um, and he'll be going down for multiple felonies. Um, last, I wanted to give a really good story. Um, we talked about the arrests, you know, I always like to have a good heartwarming story. Um, our homeless outreach team, again, uh, led by Deputy Reyes and Deputy Spicer, they do such a phenomenal job for our community. And it seems like every time I come here to address you, they're doing a reunification. And they work so hard to help our residents in need. Um, obviously, like I always tell this commission, arresting people is last. We don't like to do it, obviously, we have to sometimes, but we always offer reunification. And I'd like to tell you a story about Deputy Reyes, what he was able to do, again, um, him and Deputy Spicer. Deputy, uh, Reyes responded to a call for service at the Dana Beach Tri-Rail about a homeless young woman and her eleven-month-old daughter who needed assistance. Upon arrival, Deputy Reyes met with Alejandra and her eleven-month-old daughter, Stephanie. Deputy Reyes learned that Alejandra had been homeless, living in Dana Beach for about six months. She initially became homeless when her mother, who was housing her, could no longer afford to support them and the newborn baby, and unfortunately, asked her to leave the house. Deputy Reyes learned that she had sought services throughout the county and even signed up with the task force in the homeless helpline. But unfortunately, housing was not available. She was desperate and did not, did not know what to do. Further assessments showed that she did have family in New York City. Deputy Reyes contacted Alejandra's aunt, who confirmed that she would love to take her in, in the baby, but unfortunately, did not have the financial means to get her to New York City. Deputy Reyes researched flights that same day to prevent Alejandra and her baby from spending another night on the streets of Dana Beach. He found a non-stop flight from here to LaGuardia that left that afternoon at one fifteen PM. With the fantastic and amazing support from the multi-agency homeless task force, he was able to secure plane tickets and reunite Alejandra, her daughter, with the aunt in New York City. Deputy Reyes transported Alejandra and the baby to the airport and helped them board the plane and safely get on the airplane without issue. Deputy Reyes, later in the day, received, uh, received a text message and a phone call from the aunt showing them that they safely, uh, safely arrived in New York City and were reunited with the aunt. Again, that's amazing, amazing work that they do. And it, it just really shows the heart that Reyes and Spicer have. Um, it, it's phenomenal, and every, every week I'm here, I tell you about reunifications, but that was an eleven-month-old baby. Um, and if they weren't able to intervene and help, that baby, as of tonight, would still be on the streets, and who knows what would happen. You know, last but not least, I want to inform the commission that we, we, we were, we identified an issue, um, on the weekends over at Dana Point, started about six weeks ago, of an influx of juveniles coming in. So we have been working with Kimco, um, we have a operational plan in place that we started two weeks ago. Um, we've adjusted it, uh, based on what we've observed. We have a very, very, very proactive, aggressive operational plan in place for Friday nights and Saturday nights to help address the juvenile issue. Um, we did arrest one juvenile on Saturday night for a battery. And through stopping juveniles on the property and trespassing them with the help of Kimco, we identified that a lot of these juveniles coming on the property are from Miami Gardens, uh, North Miami, Pompano Beach, Coconut Creek, Lauderdale. Very few of these juveniles who are causing issues on the property are from Dana Beach. So that's one thing we identified last weekend. Um, we are gonna be very proactive in there, you will see many, many law enforcement officers. We also don't want to make it that our long-biting citizens are scared to come on the property, so it's a very give-and-take. But we also know that we have to make sure it's also safe for everyone coming on the property, the property, that they're not scared to come because of this influx of rowdy, rowdy juveniles that are on there causing issues. So we have this plan in place, we're working with Kimco. Kimco, Brittany and Meredith from Kimco are amazing. They're one hundred percent on board, giving us the resources with their security team, adding BSO deputies for the details on top of what we're adding with our CST team and our deputies. We have a plan in place to address that. So in case you got any calls in there, I want to let you know what we're doing. Yes.
All right. Commissioner Davis?
I was gonna save this for my commission comments, but since we're on the topic, um, I really want to think, and, um, starting with our, our city manager, this June twelfth storm was just horrific for so, so many people. And, um, you know, it really does take a team effort, and I am just so glad to be a part of this team. As soon as I spoke to the city manager, Chief Pelizar was right there, you were right there with the high-water vehicles. And I know that, um, at least ten people from the, uh, shared and east condominiums were rescued because of this team effort, which really made a huge difference in all of their lives. There were wheelchair-bound residents, there were, um, residents who, who needed to, elderly or seniors who couldn't get to their medical needs. And so because of your swift action, these people were able to, uh, have the quality of life that they, that they need and deserve uh, in our city in these emergency situations. So I really want to thank you for that. I thank each and every one of you for that, uh, swift action. But unfortunately, and I don't know what we can do about this, because you, you spoke of, I know what we've been able to see, you've put it on videotape. Um, however, there's a lot of false information that still is just permeating the city. And it's more than just the people who hear, who hear, you know, and are able to see the videos, um, that we just don't care about the flooding, even though the manager just gave a wonderful, uh, comprehensive report about the stormwater drainage project and the stormwater master plan and all these different things. Uh, we are working so hard as an entire city and as an entire team to address these issues at the highest level and investing millions of dollars into these projects, yet that narrative is still out there, um, that we just don't care about our residents, and we don't care, and we're not doing anything about the flooding. Um, there's also, uh, I received a call today about the, the Motel Six. They were saying that people were shot and killed, you know, and then putting it out on, on Facebook and, you know, just false information. So I said, well, I'm glad that you called me, because I can say, you know, I can read and say, it says without incident, which means there was no fatalities or there was no injuries. So I, I am, on the one hand, I'm so glad and I'm so proud of this team and everybody who works so hard to ensure the safety of our residents. On the other hand, um, just fighting against these false narratives just really, um, is very disheartening on the others. So I, I just want to publicly say thank you, thank all of you for what you do. I know how hard it is, I know it's not easy when we work so hard to keep our residents safe, but I thank you. Um, and if there's anything that anybody can think of, maybe we can think of a, a master plan for false narratives. Uh, but I, I would like to think of something that we can do to truly address these issues and put the facts in front of the people. Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, um, I guess I'll start where Commissioner Davis ended. The only thing I could think is that, you know, the truth will outrun a lie really fast. And so I, I think what we could do is a video collectively together at the Southeast Drainage, uh, when you start putting that shovel in the ground. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm very creative. I, I, I would like to recreate, you know, the sayings of our NBA world champions, um, you know, Jason Tatum, and what are they gonna say now, type of thing, because there, there are a lot of nasty things that we have to deal with. And, and we know the work that we put together behind these, these closed doors and even speak at meetings. And the amount of people that's talking, they never come to these meetings, right? They only look outside, and they see a puddle, and they make a post. But I think that if we, uh, are on there and we're saying, listen, this is the Southeast Drainage Project, thirty million dollars, make a fun, not funny, but, uh, interactive video to really publicize that. I think, you know, that may have some reach, we can share that in, oh, in our different spaces, and, and that can get some of, of the visibility that is needed. I, I definitely put my light on because I wanted to publicly thank, um, Detective Spicer, um, and Reyes. I, I know that they, God bless them, uh, because we talk about reunification, but we don't talk about the other things that I don't think many of us could stomach, that they willingly deal with uh, when it comes to homeless and, um, the mental issues and the feces and the urine and all of those things. And they do it with pride and with care. And, um, you know, it takes a special type of person, and I think there's a special place in heaven VIP section over there for them, because, um, it, it's just amazing what they're able to accomplish, and they choose to serve, and they choose to do that specific duty. And we need more like them, I wish we could find a few more like them to help them out. So I wanted to thank that. And, and you addressed the other issues, which is with, um, And, and you addressed the other issues, which is with um Dana Point and the juveniles. I just wanted to make sure, we're talking about budgets and we're talking about extra police officers, that we're just not funding police officers to go to Dana Point. But when you said they're giving you the, the officers and the resources, um kudos to them for being such a great partner. That's why they got the key to the city, right? Because they, they absolutely deserve it. And it, it allows us to have more jobs in the city of Dana Beach and more jobs that's going to keep us safe. So thank you to you and your entire team for continuing to keep us safe and for um adapting and evolving with the ever-changing community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioner James. You're good, chief.
Thank you. I saw the red light on. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, up next, we have our B S O firefighter chief, Sergio Pelis, sir. How you doing, chief?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioner, city manager, city staff and uh great citizens of Dana Beach. So our, uh over the last couple of weeks, since the last commission meeting, our fire rescue units partnered up with Brother Mac and Lighthouse Community Church. And we did some uh CPR and first aid classes for about twenty-five of their staff and children, actually. And we also did a big fire truck demonstration for the uh kids that were there that day. About forty of them that um, you know, got to see the fire truck and learn all about what we do in the fire rescue business. So speaking about the flooding event, um I could tell you this as far as the, the one thing that um the manager um and Lieutenant Salala said, the one thing that we had that was above and beyond anything else was communication. The communication went from the top to the bottom, to the bottom, to the top. Seamless communication and emergency management, that's the key to being successful, is having good communication. And this team definitely has entire communication. The one thing I could also add is that um uh homeless outreach, besides uh um Deputy Spice, uh Spicer doing the homeless outreach, she also did the rapid impact assessment. She, she got me all those numbers, so when I had to load that up into the web E O C, I had it. I didn't have to ask twice. When I made a phone call, they were ready to go. So, you know, everybody wears more than one hat in Dana Beach and, and with B S O. Our fire inspectors and our battalion chief and our, our first arriving crews, usually whenever um we have first arriving crews or when they go to school, it's either going to be here at Station uh One, we go to Olson or we go to any of the other schools. We have to do a yearly um evaluation of the school and if there's any safety things that we can, you know, go over there and look at. So that we just did last week at Olson Middle School and we'll be doing them throughout the summer before s- school starts back up. So we try uh continuously conduct, and that's with our S R Os, our, our school resource officers are there. They meet us and they uh get this all together so that our schools are safe when uh the kids come back to school. Our uh fire rescue crews are finishing up on their um B L S and A C L S. So that's basically uh basic life support is like when they're doing CPR. Advanced life support is when they have to do a drug. So we all get together in a group. We have teachers that come in and show us, you know, make sure that our teamwork and everything is consistent. We have to continuously train. I was part of that training the last couple of days and, you know, our groups are on top of their game, making sure that we, we is trained, trained, trained. And our, uh the motto, like I said to somebody earlier today, we, we train um like our life depends on it, because it does. So somebody's life depends on it. Three years ago, I stood in front of you and talked to you about uh CAS accreditation, uh commission on accrediting of our ambulances. That besides doing our I S O uh inspections coming up here in August thirteenth, we're also getting ready to start uh preparing for our next CAS accreditation, which will be next year. So we're always preparing for the next uh evaluation. And that's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions?
Okay, questions, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Sergio. Thanks for you, you and Captain Trau for your excellent leadership and your department's uh dedication to our community. We really appreciate it, especially what happened last week. Okay, up next, we're gonna get into our citizens' comments. So everybody has three minutes. Cannot give your time to anyone else. Please avoid being redundant. We will start with, uh forgive me for this. It's one name, Coilia, 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 C O I L L I A. Coilia, all right. We'll do, I thi- I think uh manager answered their question anyways. Okay, we'll go up to Joseph Federico. Mister Federico, please state your name and address.
Hi, uh Joe Federico, four nineteen Southeast Sixth Street, Dana. Hi, everybody. I've never been to one of these things, so um you guys do a great job. So I've never been here. Um I only want to um address one thing. There's some talk about artificial turf going on. And I just want to say, for me, it's the greatest invention ever. Um it, I mean, it looks unbelievable, so easy to take care of, no watering, the drainage is incredible. Um I get people coming by and taking pictures and I, I think it's just something that, if someone wants to do that to their home, I, for me, it's a good thing. I mean, I know there's some sports fields in town that have it. Um I mean, I can't say enough good things about it. Um I know you guys have way more important things than artificial turf on your plate, but I just wanted to say that and hope that um you give people the right to, to have that if they would like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Federico. I'm gonna drive by your house and take a look at it. All right. Up next, we have Sean DeRosa. Mister DeRosa, name and address, please.
Good evening, uh four, uh Sean DeRosa, four oh eight Southeast Fifth Street. Um today I received a code violation for our official turf installation. And this was the biggest fear I had um as the discussion became. And they tried to twist the argument and say, well, we're going after you for uh uh con- concrete, laying concrete, but probably ninety-five percent of the artificial turf that's laid in the state of Florida has a perimeter of concrete, so you can glue down the artificial turf. And then the lady tried to pick out some other concrete and I said, well, those are the footers for my awnings that had permits. What do you, what do you want me to do? Just paint it or do you want me to let it look aesthetically pleasing? Uh secondly, I was told I have illegal landscape rock. I just put six thousand dollars of a landscape rock down and now I'm told I have illegal rock. It has to be three-quarter rock. Um I don't know where we're going with this, but it seems like I'm getting targeted and retaliated against for coming up here the last two months talking about artificial grass. Um there are a lot of positive things, as Mister Federico mentioned, you look at the water conservation. Uh you look at the um saving on the gas, not having to mow the lawn. Uh you save a little bit on the noise pollution, because if you cut the grass, um you got the noise there and the fuel, but then you gotta blow it. So you probably save half on the blower noise, but also the fertilizing aspect there. There are pros and cons and there are some good pros with, with artificial turf that I hope are significantly weighed as you all go about determining the proper language within the ordinance. But I do hope that we're not penalized and targeted and if, if um Corinne or Eleanor or Candido have any questions, they're always welcome to visit my property. I'll meet with them and share with them why it may seem like there's something over concrete and maybe that they can see, oh geez, that, that is a footer. That footer was there for the last ten years. You can't remove the footer or the awning will collapse. Um secondly, they also banged me for my landscape lighting that's been out there for ten years. But coincidentally, nobody else got hit for landscaping lighting on my street. So I, I don't know why I was the target today. Um the code officer said it was a proactive visit, but I said, well, what about the short-term Airbnb's garbage issue? And what about uh my other neighbor to the east side of me that's blocking my sightline coming out of my driveway? So it just seemed very odd. I, I hope you'll take a close look at this. Um if any of you all would like a copy of the citation, I would appre- you know, I'm happy to share it with you. And then with regards to grandfathering, I, I know we talked about it at the last meeting, but it was section B dash one. And we are not currently grandfathered with the way the language is currently written. I know it's postponed until next month, but the way we left that meeting, um we would not be grandfathered in the artificial turf um uh residents that have put the turf down already. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mister DeRosa. Up next, we have Diana Cesario. Miss Cesario, please uh state your name and address. Good to see you.
Diana Cesario, four fifteen Southeast Fourth Street. My goodness, I'm too short for this. Okay. So this is my first time here. Um I've been a resident of Dana Beach since two thousand eighteen. I want to congratulate you, city manager, for everything you did for the police officers with the high vehicle for the storm. Miss Davis, I'm not yet to talk about this, but now, you know, it's first time here and I'm gonna get to that. So uh to answer your question, um how we can uh avoid all this false information for the residents. But honestly, if it wasn't for my neighbors with the artificial turf, I would have never come to a city meeting. Why? Because the preconception is the city and the residents, they don't work together. The city works against the residents. You guys are doing nothing for the flooding. Uh my neighborhood was flooded. I couldn't, I could hardly make it to my street, which um so last year, this year, the neighborhood talk, the city doesn't do anything for us. Why are we voting for you? Where is our money going? The only time we interact with the city and most of the people here are here because they have a violation. They have a citation, they have penalties, they have liens, and this shouldn't be like this. So I'm thinking, what if maybe someone would have knocked on my door? A code enforcement, I say, hi, I'm in a neighborhood. Do you know we have a meeting? Do you have anything good to say? Encourage people to come to say good things and hear everything that you've been doing for us. How would I know what are you doing for me if I don't receive any news from you on email? Nothing. Um I'm nervous. Okay. Going to the artificial turf, right? My dog, which I have for four years, has three terrible allergies, grass, dust, anything but food, which she loves to eat. So for me, artificial turf will be a great alternative to all the thousands of dollars I'm spending on vet bills, because my dog cannot sit on grass. He gets all- allergies on the medicine, on the food. I have young children. We have the roundworms that if they touch, you have to take them to the da- um pediatrician, dermatologist, invest money. So yes, artificial turf may be an issue for some people. I don't know why. It looks beautiful. Um when it comes to concrete, you don't need a lot of concrete to install it. It's a small border that goes around the perimeter, maybe three to four inches thick. It doesn't go in the ground. It doesn't cut any cables, pipes, anything. It gets glued and uh they put some nails in. Um it looks good. It's great for drainage. Um I don't have to use the mulch. When it floods, the mulch goes out in the street, in the drains. And now my street has an issue, which the city doesn't fix, because you guys, as far as I know, do nothing other than give uh fines. So that's my input on the artificial turf. And um when it comes to the homeless case.
Miss Cesario, I'm sorry your time is up. I have to be fair with everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, if, if I may, Nanette, our communications director, can, can you um come over here real quick and, and, and um, Miss Cesario? Can, can you share your, your, your email with Nanette, our communications director? Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead. Commissioner James?
Well, she's back there talking now. I just, I just want to say to the, what's her name? Miss Cesario, just one second. I just want to let you know that we're not afi- we're not against having artificial turf. So I want to clear up that miscommunication. We're not against having artificial turf. We are trying to formulate how to regulate it i- in a way that um is sustainable and, and that beautifies and makes sure that's a standard in the city. So we are for artificial turf. We have zero landscaping in the city. Um this is something in addition to what we have. And so I, I would urge you to speak with Nanette, but also speak with community development to see exactly what we are allow, what we are going to allow. Because I don't want you to leave here thinking that, I don't, I don't want you to leave here thinking that we don't, we're against artificial turf. That's number one. Number two, we have a magazine, we have publications and emails that go out, get with Nanette. And, and, and I would encourage you and your neighbors to just be more involved in following these pages and co-read, and then you will be way more um prepared and informed on all the things that's going on in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Onto the consent agenda. Is there any items that the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
Make a motion to approve um the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, consent agenda passes unanimously. Like our uh city manager highlighted, that was our water and sewer uh stormwater uh assessment that we're having, well, I mean, sorry. That was our Southeast Drainage Project with uh F D M, which we're really excited about, and FEMA as well. Okay, Commissioner Salvino. One second here, let me collect my notes. All right. We're gonna go to quasi judicial and public hearings. Item ten point one, please, Eve.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Dana Beach approving the site plan submitted by First Dana Beach LLC for the property located forty-six Southwest First Avenue in the city of Dana Beach, providing for an effective date. This item is sought to be continued to July ninth, twenty twenty-four commission meeting, although you do still have to have the public hearing on, on whether to continue it or not.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on item ten point one before we continue it? Yes, ma'am, come on up. State your name and address.
Hello, everybody. All right, my name is Paula Gadel. My address is four oh six Southeast Third Street. And I didn't sign to speak because I didn't know who you were talking about. Okay. Anyway, I just want to know who and when they determined, when they put up the barricades to block off the streets? Because I'm almost to the point now, I can almost handle the flooding. Now I can't handle the cars that have to zoom down the streets and create the wake. And that's when the water starts coming into at least my home and I'm sure other people's homes. So if they block the streets off, we'd have at least a little bit less water coming in, is how I feel. And if you want to give me a barricade, I'd gladly take it and put it out myself.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments pertaining to item ten point one anymore? All right, seeing none. Uh Commissioner James?
Make a motion to continue item ten point one to the July ninth meeting.
Okay, motion to continue. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed, say nay. Hearing none, item passes can, uh unanimously to be continued to the next meeting. Okay, now we're gonna go to our first reading ordinances. Eleven point one, please, Eve.
An ordinance of the city commission amending chapter twenty-eight Land Development Regulations, Part One Use Regulations, Article one oh five Use Regulations for Residential and Open Space Zoning Districts at Section one oh five dash ninety outdoor storage containers, provided for conflicts of irreblability, codification, and an effective date. This is a community development item.
Good evening, uh Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director in Community Development. This is first reading of a text amendment. Um the request is to provide an update um and detailed regulations for the use of cargo or shipping containers in our land development code. In April of twenty twenty-three, there was amendment made to allow containers to be used for construction. Um the city would like to establish regulations and parameters on how to expand that use. It was a pretty limited use originally. So the proposed amendment would be removing a special exception requirement that currently exists. We'll be acknowledging that um shipping containers are suitable alternative to cons- to traditional construction material and um to implement design guidelines in the land development code for different uses, such as residential, commercial, or industrial. And so this is what some of the examples of what it can look like. On the left-hand side, you can see that, clearly can see the different containers that were assembled for the construction. On the right-hand side is the finished product after they put, you know, finishing across the building. So it's not gonna look like the raw, rusted containers. It would look like a finished structure. They're just merely using it as construction material. And we've had a lot of demand and a lot of requests of this, you know, in the past. So this is us just answering those requests that we've been getting over and over. This is another example. This is a residential product um as a result of those containers. Um so it, the, the regulations, it does require that these containers have these design components to it, so that, especially in residential, so that it looks like a home and it blends with the residential um character. Um for dwelling units, as I said, there are architectural treatments um that are required um as well as development standards that are in the zoning code based on district where they may be located. Containers used for a section- Containers used for secondary structures, um, must follow the land development regulations that are currently in place. For multifamily, um, does require site plan review. So that would be the same, um, for the use of containers for multifamily, it would be the same process. So, um, site plans for projects over an acre end up coming to you as a city commission. Less than an acre and less than fifty units goes to P and Z for public hearing. For non-residential, um, the properties, um, located within the noise contours of the airport must provide sound mitigation to the surrounding property. So we don't want the material to result in amplification of noise. So that was the intent there. Um, design and performance standards are applicable. Um, we still require, um, as we saw in that first example, that they, um, be painted and maintained in good, um, you know, um, good conditions at all times. Um, and that we do require the enhancement through architectural features. Um, signage would also be limited to five square feet for commercial projects. These are some examples of commercial features, but I do want to, um, make you aware that our code currently has a limitation on the number of colors that can be used, um, to three colors per structure. So some of these more, um, colorful examples, um, would require like a variance or something to become forward at, as part of the site plan. So we wouldn't get like this product. But it would be like the material, the, the, how, examples of how those containers could be used in a commercial setting. So the Planning and Zoning Board did hear these amendments on June twentieth and recommended approval unanimously of the proposed, um, changes and text amendments. And at this time, the city, um, staff is recommending approval on first reading as well. It is a, um, an ordinance, so it does require two readings. And I'm available for any questions. You're welcome.
Thanks, Corinne. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Okay, we'll start with you, Commissioner James.
Make a motion to approve eleven point one.
I have a motion to approve eleven point one, Vice Mayor.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. All right, eleven point one passes unanimously. All right, eleven point two, please, Eve, and this is not a public hearing.
An ordinance of the City Commission amending chapter twenty-seven Water and Sewer, Article Six Stormwater Utility, at section twenty-seven dash three oh four Stormwater Assessment Authorization of the city's code to authorize the city administration to allow the city to modify and equitably assess stormwater utility charges after reviewing, uh, the assessment role, provided for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date. This is a finance item.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Frank DiPaolo, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Dania Beach. And, um, real briefly, you know that we have a stormwater assessment in the city. We charge, uh, what's called an equivalent residential unit to each improved property within the city. Um, there are certain exemptions, but generally speaking, all, um, residential, commercial, um, acreage get charged a stormwater assessment. The current rate's sixty dollars per equivalent residential unit. Um, we have some major stormwater projects to address some of the challenges that we've had. And, um, we are seeking a bond issue this year in the fall of thirty million dollars, and that's gonna require us to increase our assessment from sixty dollars to a hundred dollars. That's what we've been discussing, as we mentioned to you recently in our workshop in the spring. And, um, we did attempt to increase the assessment last year, and we, we had some issues with, um, concerns with the community over, um, equity in the assessment units and how we were levying them. So we took a look at our, our stormwater methodology. We engaged a consultant to review our practices and how we've been charging the equivalent residential units. And what we determined is that, uh, we need a little bit of administrative flexibility and, and applying the units, um, in a more equitable manner, so that we don't have those kind of concerns that we had in the past. And, um, this ordinance is basically gonna give us the administrative flexibility to make those changes to the assessment role, so that we don't have concerns this fall. And, and we're, we're definitely going to address specifically the ones that we did encounter this past year. If there are other ones that come up through the process, we're more than happy to speak with people and, and, um, we'll address whatever needs to be addressed, um, if it's appropriate. So what we're just asking for at this time is to adopt this ordinance so that we can make those changes that are necessary to the tax role or to the stormwater assessment role. And, um, and that'll, again, allow us to move forward with our funding and financing plan.
Thank you, Frank. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you, Frank. Um, you're asking for the ability to make the changes. Are you gonna come back with those specific changes, or are they already set in stone? And, um, for the public, what would be the highest rate that someone in a condo or townhome would potentially pay?
I don't have the, the whole assessment role in front of me, and it is, it is pretty varied and across the board. And what I can tell you is that the, the changes that are being recommended are to specific property types. So there's certain property types that, that look and feel like a single family, but because of their, what's called the, the DOR classification code, they've been assessed as a condominium or something else, and that requires that we apply a different type of formula. So what we're doing is we're treating those ones that kind of look and behave like a single-family type of residence as a single-family type of residence. So generally speaking, if they're a single-family unit or a single unit, they'll get charged one unit. Some of them were being charged more because of the way this calculation is being performed. So what we're doing is simplifying the methodology and making it so that, um, for example, the one-town home con- uh, complex that had about eighty-two units, and they're being charged three and a half units, just had to do with the nature of the property. But because they were considered a condo and not a townhome, they were getting charged a certain way. Those will all become one unit. So even though we're gonna be increasing the rate this year, those, they're all gonna see a substantial decrease in their stormwater assessment. Um, I, I can, I'd be happy to, to go over some more of the details with you if you'd like. I just don't have that kind of data, and it's, it's very complicated, and there's, there's, I think, about nineteen hundred properties that we're looking at adjusting.
And I know, it is complicated. I, I mean, I'm gonna trust, um, I'm gonna trust the team until I get a hateful email that tells me otherwise. So, thank you. I know it's ve- it's very difficult to understand because there's so many different types and how you all are. I, I appreciate the way you've gone above and beyond and then found consultants to try and, um, address our concerns, and so thank you for that.
Frank, when's the last time we had, uh, updated this?
Um, the last time we've done any kind of an update was around two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine, yeah. And what do we pay in comparison just to our neighboring cities, Hollywood, Fort Lauderdale, and, you know, maybe Howlandale? I know you have it kind of on top of your head, right?
Yeah, Fort Lauderdale is considerably higher. I think they're well over two hundred dollar range. I think they're going up even more this year. Hollywood is, is over a hundred dollars. Howlandale is similarly expensive. So, um, as you all know, with all the, the flooding that's occurred recently, it's all the coastal, older infrastructure close to the, to the water, cities were predominantly affected. And, and, I mean, I think that just being at a hundred, allowing us to do another thirty million dollars of improvements is a huge value to the community, because, um, we're still among the lowest.
Yeah, that's the point I wanted to make. Thank you for answering those questions. Is I just want to speak to the commission, have them consider maybe, you know, going a little higher than one hundred. You know, we don't just, we want to fix this for the long term. So, uh, like I said, we pay a significant, significantly lower cost for stormwater compared to other cities, and it's, it not, it does, nothing separates us from Fort Lauderdale and Hollywood. We are, we're all coastal cities that experience extreme weather. Since two thousand and nine, you know, we've gotten in more and more extreme weather events. So I'm just trying to fix this for the long term, so we don't have to come back to it. And we're not just skimming by just to get enough money, but we could actually have more money to improve it. So I just wanted the commission to consider that. That's all. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, uh, item eleven point two.
Okay, motion for approval of item eleven point two, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, second reading ordinances, item twelve point one, please, Eve.
An ordinance of the City Commission amending chapter thirteen Health and Sanitation at section thirteen dash twenty-one Definitions to provide further clarity to the definition of nuisance, provided for conflicts, codification, severability, and effective date. This is my item. Um, so this is second reading. It is a public hearing. Um, as indicated at the first reading, the nuisance section is sort of our catch-all. Like if we did not have a, a specific code provision for enforcement, um, the nuisance covered all of those aspects. But because we've cited nuisance in a number of different situations, people wanted examples. They, because they said, you know, you've cited me for a blue tarp or for bedbugs, and I don't see bedbugs in the nuisance section. So we added those examples in. The, I did do one, uh, amendment in between first and second reading, and actually this came at the recommendation of the vice mayor, which I think is a, a just modification. It's in addition saying that these nuisance regulations do not supersede the more specific regulations. So the point is, if you have an ordinance on landscaping, you're gonna cite the law ordinance on landscaping for a landscape violation. If it's a, um, a violation for towing a, a veh- a vehicle, an abandoned vehicle, you're gonna cite that versus this. This is your, um, default when you can't find a specific section, but you have a nuisance, something that is bothering the neighborhood, where it's not being taken care of.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
And just to, to pick, to talk about that a little bit, one of the reasons why I brought it up is because I've seen this in other types of law, where people want to piggyback multiple laws, um, a- and cite people for multiple things. So as opposed to doing that, we have one law for certain things, one law for something else. And then this is the catch-all for anything that isn't specifically out there. So, um, it just, it's something that I've been dealing with in my own life and my own practice. So I, I thought it made sense to do it here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, Commissioner James?
Yes, um, thank you for clearing that up, Eve, because that was gonna be my, uh, my comment, is that shouldn't we include noise in the nuisance, but since it supersedes nuisance, it makes, I understand. I'd like to make a motion to approve twelve point one.
Motion to approve twelve point one, Vice Mayor?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. There we go. All right, now we're on item thirteen point one, discussion, possible action, Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the proper city official to approve public art installation request made by the property owner for Stadia Beach LLC for one oh one Dania Apartments to be located at one oh one Southwest First Avenue, provided for conflicts and an effective date. This is community development.
Good evening. So I do have a presentation if you guys, um, need that, but it is a, um, a public art, um, proposal for the one oh one project, the Dania one oh one. It's phase one, phase two, and it's, um, the hands, that would be a sculpture of hands holding up the pedestrian bridge that connects the two projects. It is, um, proposed by Lorenzo Quinn. He's an international public artist. On May twentieth, the Public Art Advisory Board heard, um, the request, um, reviewed it, recommended approval unanimously, five zero. And at this point, staff's recommending, um, approval of the pub- public art piece into the city's public art collection. I'm available if you have any questions.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yeah, I don't need a, uh, the whole thing. Can you just show everybody the picture?
Yes, I do have that. Let's see, I have a bunch of examples of what they're, of the artists here, but this is the proposal. You can see the bridge and the hands that are supporting the bridge. So that's the sculpture that's being proposed.
Yes, I, I know that we continue the other item from this, so is that going to impact this at all?
So there are, um, he already has two, um, uh, site plan approvals. Both phases are approved. So he could pull permits for the second phase that's not yet under construction because it was previously approved. What was continued was a modification of that project.
Right, but I know there was like with the floors, I just want to make sure we won't have to come back with these hands and if they have to do anything.
Nope, this is the, yep, would be final approval of the art piece.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve thirteen point one.
All right, motion to approve. Commissioner Davis?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Okay, item thirteen point one passes unanimously. We're coming down to the home stretch here, when we will start with Commissioner Joyce Davis for Commissioner Commons.
I will be brief, but there was one group, uh, that I didn't mention that I specifically saw out there, which, uh, Denser mentioned, which is the Public Services Team, who came out, um, like ten o'clock at night, stayed throughout the night in these different, uh, condominiums and Sheridan East condominiums, uh, specifically worked through the night, pumped water all night, and, and all through the next day. So I really want to thank, uh, Denser and the Public Services Team for, uh, their diligence and making sure that our residents were safe as well. Um, I also want to thank, um, our Public Services Team with, uh, Candido for the two thousand, uh, sandbags, the two hundred and fifty the next day. I know that, uh, that really made a difference for a lot of different residents, and I did have some, um, different residents and businesses called the next day requesting the sandbags, and they are really, really happy about this proactive effort, um, to, uh, prevent some of the flooding that is, that is happening. So thank you to all of you for, um, getting that team together. Those sandbags are heavy, so thank you guys for all you do, uh, to protect our residents. Uh, lastly, I am leaving out of town at seven AM, so I just want to say congratulations and go Cats. Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, go Panthers. You guys made me a very happy woman last night. I bet on them. Oh, it's legal. It's a heart rock app. Um, unfortunately, uh, we were, we had to cancel the Juneteenth celebration, uh, but thank you to everyone. I think I mentioned that at the last meeting. Um, The Key to the City at Dania Point, something that was really, really special, and, uh, it, 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 it was kind of, it took my breath away. Like it was very, very nice, and thank you to Public Services and the entire team, and Maxine on her vacation, and Chris is stepping in, but, uh, total team effort right there in, in making that. And that's such a staple, and that's such a memorable moment that we can all look back on and be so proud of. Um, financial literacy has started with our summer camp programs, and so kudos to Sakia Speaks in being able to do that. And, uh, thank you to the staff for making the process of the sandbags so much more efficient. When we first started doing sandbags, we were out there shoveling them ourselves. Um, and although we like to have skin in the game, we were able to do so much more, so much faster. And so thankfully, we have those monies in the budget and we're able to really, um, give back to our residents. Uh, I already addressed the storm water project. Um, the last thing is happy Fourth of July. Uh, be safe with fireworks and responsible. And, um, I want to thank the mayor. You have, uh, grown so much in, in conducting these meetings and working. It is a, if you haven't sat in that seat, you don't know. It's an adjustment, it's a transition period to be able to operate the technology and keep us all under wraps. And you handled this meeting, uh, like Shakari Richards, who's gonna be, um, representing us in the Olympics. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and have a good night.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Salvino?
Yeah, I'll take about fifteen minutes here. I messed with you. Um, I was at the sandbag distribution, and so was the rest of us here. And I think it's great to see the whole staff of, of the whole council up there to go out there and help out. I do have to comment, though, that the, the, our staff that works for the City of Dania Beach is out there threshing. It's just not the city employees. It was the fire department, the sheriff's department. So everybody contributed that, and it's, it's nice to see everybody work together. Um, the chief has always been working very hard, and he's got his hands full with a lot of the little more crime that we've had, and some of them are pretty hard. But, um, it seems like we're, we're always catching the person, so, uh, Broward Sheriff's Department, my compliments to you. Um, The Key to the City today, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Commissioner James for doing the presentation on that. Uh, you know, she's the one that brought to the attention, uh, you know, to the city, and it was a great presentation. It was hot, though. I'll tell you, it was hot. And, I mean, I was soaked out. And, but, uh, if, if, if everybody wants to know where it is, go right to the, uh, south of Tommy Bahamas, and there it is, sitting right there on the, right on the street. Uh, there's, uh, two plaques on it. They're very nice, especially my name's on one of them. Um, but, oh, it is on both? Oh, jeez. And the mayor's on the other side. Huh? Oh, jeez, look at that. Anyhow, uh, it's a great, uh, the city did a great job putting that together. It really looks good there. Um, and like, uh, Commissioner James said, you know, with Bob Shapiro there that did the, uh, the, the vision, that project, he got emotional today, and it was a very, uh, uh, start to finish, uh, job, and, you know, commend the, uh, um, community development and all of their staff. For all, what a massive project for you guys to put together over there, so, um, I'm very proud of all you. So, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I will be very brief. Um, just want to remind everybody about the core meetings. Um, we had the first one, and it really was, uh, very good. Um, uh, you know, some, there's some back and forth that goes on, but at least people get to meet everybody, um, in person and put names with faces if they haven't been to a meeting, and get some information. And even if the questions are not answered on the spot, at least they get a business card and can talk to somebody later on. And we know that our team is very good at following up. So, um, that was something that, uh, I, I think it's, it's going to help a lot, because I know that's been something, it's gone on for years, where people have said, why won't you come to us? So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing how the other ones go as well. Um, and the flooding, of course. Um, I want to touch on something that, uh, uh, Chief Pelisser said earlier about communication being a key. And I think it's everybody, um, with the communication. The entire team did a great job of communication, keeping us informed about what was going on so that we could then report back to people. And that's huge. That's something that it seems to keep getting better and better, and everybody working really well together and speaking to each other and helping each other and just jumping all in, um, regardless of what time of day it is, and really just trying to help. So, um, I appreciate it. I want to thank everybody.